Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday night Town Hall meeting. I am Valerie Abrahanian, the IEP Navigator Coach. And every Wednesday night, I have a Town Hall meeting, so I can keep parents up to date with the new guidelines coming down from Congress regarding remote learning. And right now, we're still in the situation where most districts are continuing to look at surveys that have been taken. Most districts sent out surveys recommended by the the United States Department of Education, recommended that districts send out a survey to all of their parents in their district, asking, what is the parent's preference? What are the parents' input? Do parents want to go back to school? Do they not want to go back to school? How are they feeling about remote learning? And getting parents' input. So that's what's been happening. Most districts have provided the survey results to the parents. And, and they've been having kind of back and forth collaborative communication and talking with what is going to be the decision. There, there's three options that Congress has recommended, which would be a full opening, depending upon the guidelines of the CDC in that certain state. The next option would be a hybrid schedule, which they would go back part-time to school and part-time with remote learning. And then the third option would be to not open at all and remain in a remote learning model. So some districts have made a decision and given some information to parents. Some districts have not made a decision and have not communicated with parents on what they've decided for next school year. So just a little bit of input, and I know we have people from all over the nation, but in terms of the local school district that I really focus on there, you know, and this might be happening with you. So this, this school district, they sent out a letter stating that they were they were going to, I get confused now. The first one was that they were not going to open. They were not going to open at least for the first four weeks of school. And then they were going to be working on training the teachers in remote learning the first four weeks of school. That was the letter sent by the superintendent. And just one week later, they sent out a letter saying, oh, just kidding. Now we are going to open, full open, to a full-time schedule. But parents could choose to remain at home in distance learning if they would like. So within one week, they went from not opening to opening. So this is, you know, the type of, a kind of shows that districts really still don't know what they're doing. Now, the, the problem with this is, which I want to alert all parents too, in that example, is that the district should be working diligently with all fidelity right now in training their teachers how to use technology, how to provide equitable distance learning plans, how to feel comfortable with, with teaching through a remote learning model. That's what they should be focusing on right now. This school district is not doing that, which is why they're flip-flopping back and forth. Because the teachers have not been trained adequately, if at all, very, very little. The teachers don't feel comfortable in a remote learning model. And they're not taking the recommendations from Congress to ensure that teachers and students and parents have transitioned to be successful in accessing curriculum through a remote learning model. That's what we should be preparing ourselves for. Because we know that distance learning is the future. It is going to be part, if not all, of the future of our child's next school year. So a, a district that is, is working in the benefit of children is going to be doing just that. Diligently and with fidelity, training their teachers and working with parents on training parents as well as students to access distance learning. So if your district isn't doing that, you have, that's a red flag for you to make sure, parents, that you start preparing yourself on what should, what is an equitable distance learning plan? What does that mean? What can I ask for? What should I be looking for? What are my rights? What is the US Department of Education say the guideline should be? That's what I'm going to be going over with you tonight. Okay? So the first thing I want to tell you is, do not sign an amendment that your district sends you that is going to change the model for your child's IEP. That would be the worst thing you could ever do. Because the districts that are not training properly and know they are going to be providing at least a hybrid distance learning program or a full distance learning program next year, those districts that aren't training properly because they don't want to spend the money, they don't want to hassle with it, and it's going to look just like March, April, and May next school year. Those districts are sending out amendments for parents to sign without holding an IEP meeting. That's a distance learning IEP, saying that they're going to change the model from direct services to indirect services. That would be, mean that you were waiving their obligation to teach your child. That means that they're going to keep throwing at you all this information, resources, websites, lists, handouts, emailing a stuff for you to do, and you're going to remain the teacher, just like in March, April, and May. You're going to relieve them from, because direct services means teacher is directly teaching one-on-one with your child in a specialized academic instruction. Your teacher is going to get online and teach your child. Your services are going to be taught directly to your child through distance learning, direct instruction, direct services for speech and language, tele, tele services online to your child. OT, tele services online to your child. That doesn't mean, indirect means they can just throw the, the, it on you as the mom. Indirect means the teacher's hands are washed. They don't have to provide that direct service to your child. And they can just keep throwing at you all the stuff they want to throw at you, and you're going to have to figure it out. You're going to have to be the one to individualize it for your child. Do the modifications, the accommodations, shift, shift through all the, this myriad of information they throw at you. And that's not what you want to do. Plus, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So parents, please, if you hear anything that I'm saying, they are supposed to be continuing to teach your child. That doesn't mean getting on and saying hello and having kids come on and talking and telling me what they did for vacation and saying, hi, Mom, how you doing? Do you have any questions? That's not teaching. That's not direct instruction. That's not direct services. If your speech and language pathologist gets on and say, how can I support you? Here's a bunch of exercises you can do with your child. That's not direct services. Do not sign anything that looks like that. What you should be doing is then you would respond, you would say, nope, I'm sorry, I'm not signing that. And then you should be writing a letter, making your requests of what you want your child's distance learning program to look like. Okay? And I'm going to go over some of those things that you can ask for in a, in a few minutes. Now, I want to read you an actual email from one of my clients that the district sent, so to give you an example of what the language they use, so that you don't get tricked into signing an amendment like this. I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but I'm going to read you the most important parts. So, so, so it was the, one of the, I guess it was the, the case carrier from the school site. She said to the mom, and then she says, hello, Mom, you know, thanks for our conversation yesterday. I'm following up with you on a remote learning for next school year, whether we open or not, but we still want to provide you with an amendment for distance learning. So she says, since we are not physically present at school, I am proposing to provide indirect services to your son for a summer, for, for the summer program, E S Y, Extended School Year. There she said it. I am proposing to provide indirect services for summer school. I will be sending along resources of things you can do with him at home, and, and I am available to support you. Right there, she's telling you that, that's Mom, that I'm going to send you a bunch of resources, and that's going to be your summer school, Mom, and I'm not going to be getting online and teaching your son anything. It's up to you. That's not summer school. That's not E S Y. That's not working on goals. That's not making your shot, your child doesn't regress. It's insane, actually. So, so right there, you know, you got to catch those words when they say things like that. Then she goes on to say, we also mentioned to you that since students are accessing school remotely this week and are at home and not physically at school, that we are required to amend the IEP to state that the setting for school this week and for as long as school remains closed for the next school year will be remote, and that services will be provided remotely as well. Additionally, if we do continue on a remote learning plan past spring break, we can talk further about tele services for speech and S A I, Specialized Academic Instruction, which is your special ed teacher's instruction, and how we might arrange that. Would you like me to send you a draft of the amendment that we have and all the pages within the IEP that will be amended as well? So, parents, this is a huge violation of what Congress has said remote learning is supposed to look like. They're going to take away this, this child's, basically, IEP, and they're going to release themselves of obligation. If that parent signed that, they would release themselves from obligation of teaching that child academic instruction, work on the goals, individualize the services and the instruction and the learning, and throw it all on the mother to teach their child with all the resources they're going to provide the child, the mother, to work on. Now, just, and now, does anybody have any questions about that? Because I want to make sure you guys clear, understand that the difference between direct services, indirect services, having you sign an amendment without an IEP meeting, because they tell you they have to do this because it's, we're in a remote learning situation, so you have to sign an IEP now that says that. You don't have to sign an IEP that says that. Your IEP that you have right now is perfectly fine. It's perfectly fine. The, the Secretary DeVos said IEPs are to be implemented. IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, was not waived, and that teachers and parents are to work collaboratively and creatively together to, to have the IEPs implemented. And that's through tele services, which is real therapy sessions online through the service providers and teachers getting online to provide direct instruction online to work on goals and provide accommodations. Now, who has questions about that? Or has anybody, you know, been offered an amendment to sign similar to that?
I haven't been offered an amendment, but I'm just wondering that when you reject it, how would you word it?
So you would just, so it would be called a partial agreement, or you can just write a letter. You know, I call it a partial agreement because that's what attorneys and advocates call it when you're rejecting something in the IEP. Because you want your IEP to remain in effect. So you're, you're giving authorization. You're not going to sign that amendment in any way, shape, or form. We're going to be writing a letter instead, and it's going to be called a partial agreement. And you're going to say, this partial agreement will serve as my signature of the amendment that you offered me. Okay? And I, I, I disagree with that amendment. I don't agree to changing over to indirect services. My IEP says my child gets direct services for two times a week of speech a week, one time a week of OT a week, and I still continue to want those direct services remotely. And I'm supposed to be getting, you know, 358 minutes a, a day of S A I for specialized academic instruction. I still want that in a direct service model. I do not want indirect services. And that's what you would say. And then, in addition to lots of other things, I'm going to be telling you what you can say for what to ask for.
Okay.
Okay? Sure. So now, now, before we go on, I'm going to, I'm going to wait till the end, and I'm going to give you guys the list. I, I, I've been going over this. I went over this list in my Facebook Live on Monday, and I also kind of talked about it last Wednesday night for the Town Hall meeting. But I'm going to continue to go over it because I don't think parents are hearing me. I want you to really understand this, because this is getting now to the rubber meets the rope. Okay? Most parents are getting screwed for summer school again. It's, it looks just like it did in April, May, and June. The remote learning, the E S Y. The E S Y programs are not looking good. It's just the same old, same old with, with parents doing all the work again. So it, and it can't be that way for next school year, you guys, or your child's going to go more than a year without an education. So you need to learn what your rights are. You need to know how to ask for it, what to ask for, and to make sure your child doesn't continue to regress. Because they've already regressed. They've already regressed. So I, I listened to a webinar today, and it was from the Office of Educational Technology. So the, the Office of Education, the United States Office of Education, which is the make of Congress. So every state has their Office of Education, right? Our, our state, which is our state's Special Education Code or Education Code. And then federally, there's the US Congress, Office of Education. Now, within the Office of Education for the United States, they have what's called an Office of Educational Technology. Okay? It's a, it's a whole office that's just for technology. That's always been there. Okay? So I watched a, a webinar today that they did a huge webinar on, to the teachers, to the educators, to the administrators on, hey, guys, you guys need to, you know, catch up here. Let's, you know, you, you only have a few more months left before school opens again. And it pretty much looks like remote learning's happening. So this is what you need to do. These are the, you know, we're here to help you, to serve you, to train you, to help you with training your districts and, and getting the teachers understanding how to do this properly. So, so you can go to this site, it's called Office of Educational Technology dot net, and you can go there, and you can read lots of information, the same information that I learned today. So in that webinar, I learned that they said, hey, you know, districts across the nation, we've had what's called Universal Access Techno, Universal Access Learning, which is a technologically-based learning program. They've had it for years. And a lot of school districts have used that, especially in special education, because kids, because it's, it's made for diversified learning, and, and kids love it. They make it so kids are interested in it. They enjoy it. It's engaging. And it was, a, a lot of kids have, have been at least introduced to it. And it's been there for a long time, and they're saying everybody should be accessing this now and should have accessed this before, because it was already in place. But a lot of districts still aren't doing that. So it's called Universal Access Learning. It's, it's provides digital learning guides and everything. It's already, already made up a whole program of curriculum for every grade level in a digital model. So they have that. They're like, why aren't you guys using that? Because you, you could have already been using it. So they have that. And, and districts know that. They know that. And it, it makes learning accessible to all learners, like I said, because it's diversified. It's even accessible to our kids on IEPs, very much so. So the other thing they talked about was, and they recommended that, you know, a, a distance learning, this is what distance learning should be doing. It, the most equitable distance learning should be improving the learning models over time to include in-person instruction, meaning the, the teachers teach instruction in person, online to their kids, and with the technology, with data collection, so the progress monitoring. So they said it needs to have those three components, no questions asked. That blended learning for technology needs to include teachers' teaching, direct teaching, plus the technology, all the different programs that are available, plus this progress monitoring, which they also have all those progress monitoring programs that they provide as well for teachers to easily know how to grade the kids, assess the kids, you know, look at what, are they learning? Are, are they mastering concepts? Those kinds of things that teachers need to know how to do. Okay? So those, those are some of the components of what you, what you want to look for in a distance learning model that they, districts should be doing. And also, that the data should be individualized for each student. It shouldn't just be across the board. It needs to be individualized according to your child's present levels of performance for your, individualized to your child's goals. And it needs to be content-based. So they need to make sure that your child is learning and progressing towards their individualized goals. Okay? They also talked about what it does, should not, should not be, and that is that it should not just be the handouts online, the, the logs online, the, the lists of websites, the lists of links. They said that is not remote learning. They said that remote learning is not not giving grades and not giving new material, because so many districts, they said, we found that lots of districts from across the nation decide, decided to forego grading and forego, forego teachers providing new material. That's why districts said, we're giving enrichment, because we're not grading. So teachers don't have to provide new material. That's what they did. They said that is not remote learning. So they flat-out came and said, you guys are doing it wrong, and this is what you need to start doing. And, and the superintendents, they, they know this. They, they are very well aware of these things. Also, the tech tools that they use, tech, technology tools that teachers use should, should not be the learning. The tech tools are not, they're, they're not the only thing that, that is the learning for the child. Okay? They're assisting the teacher to push the learning. Okay? So just because they're providing new technology tools and links and websites, oh, we're to giving technology, yeah, we're giving it to the mom to figure it out. That's not distance learning. They're saying, they're saying these are tools for the teachers to teach and to have the child access learning. Okay? So it's a complete switch of what they're thinking, what remote learning is supposed to be. And they also know that. Now, I also wanted to tell you that they said, and this was just shocking to me. They said that they, they offer, it's called AlwaysReadyForLearning.org. And it is a free website that they're offering for any teacher from across the nation to say, hey, I need coaching. I need help. I need training. I'm not getting good training from my district. And I, and I'm stuck, and I want to make sure that my kids learn next year. I want help, and you can call them, and it's a free service, that you'll get a tech specialist helping you to learn how to provide distance learning through technology. It's free. It's called AlwaysReadyForLearning.org, that any teacher from across the nation can call. They said they would respond within 24 hours. So this office is providing everything that our districts need. There is no, there's no excuse for it, that they're not doing it. They also got billions of dollars of funding to do it. The other thing that they said is that every kid should have their own device. And they, and the districts are supposed to be making sure that, that, that that family has a, access to the internet, and that if not, the districts are responsible to provide a hotspot for that family. And that, that, that should have also already been done. They said, they said, after, like, two weeks after schools closed, they were told, all districts were told, that this should happen. And I knew lots of moms that didn't get it till just recently in the summer, their, their child's device. So if you don't have a device for your kid, you're late. And they need to get you a device right away. Every child should have their own device. And don't let them tell you, oh, we're only giving one per household. No, if your child's on an IEP, they get their own device. Really, every child should have their own device, but they're kind of fighting that. You know, like, if there's three kids in a family, they're, 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 you know, kind of resistant to give three devices to a family. But, but, you know, that's neither here nor there, because I'm focusing on IEP kids. And every IEP kid should have their own device, and you should make sure you have access to the internet. Okay? So I wanted to give you that information, just so you guys are aware of all of this information of what so you know what to expect from your school district. These are the things you should be expecting. Okay? So now I'm going to give you, go over the list again of what you can ask for, for a, a distance learning plan and what you, what you should expect from your school district. So I already talked about that every kid should get a device, and every kid should have a Wi-Fi, adequate Wi-Fi in their home. Training, if you, if you need parent training on how to help your child get on technology, on Google Classrooms, on anything. If you need training, you can ask your district, I need parent training for technology. I can't figure it out, so how am I supposed to help my child access it? You can ask for parent training. For instruction from the teachers, I, again, I, I said that the teacher needs to offer consistent live, online instruction. Consistent live, online instruction to your child. They should offer that those live classes that they provide be recorded, and that you have access to the recordings. Because if, for some reason, your child wasn't on a classroom, then they have the recording so they can make it up. You can ask for that. These are all things that they're perfectly fine and within your rights to ask for. They need to mandate a consistent school-wide schedule without overlapping classes, so that classes conflict. So this would be more if your child's in middle school or high school. But so, say, your child has a math class, and at the same time, they have a language arts class. So you have to choose. They're going to have to miss one of the classes. Nope. They need to figure out schedules so that that overlapping classes and conflicting classes do not occur. Progress monitoring, you need to make sure that, just like I talked about, that data collection, that's a component of equitable distance learning, that, that the districts must now implement for next school year, that your child is receiving grades, and that you're getting feedback on your child's assignments. That, that your child is being assessed to measure academic progress towards your child's goals and objectives. They better be working on those goals and objectives, because if they are not, they are violating your, the implementation of your child's IEP. So do you, do you kind of see that, parents, that if they're just giving you these links and resources, resources, where are your goals implemented in those generic list of resources that they're giving to every other student? These generic lists? That is not individualized. That is not implementation of your child's IMP, EP. That, that means it's a violation of non-implementation of your child's IEP. They should be surveying you bi-weekly, or at least communicating with you, collaborating with you. Mom, how are you doing? Is it working? Is your child accessing? How are you feeling? Are, are, do you need more parent training? Do you have questions? What can we do to help you? They should be in communication with parents, so that we can work together to make this work, to get all the kinks out, the problems out, so that you can tell them, no, it's not working. I, I need this. I need that. I need help with this. I have questions about that. They need to be communicating with you. And let me tell you, if they're not, then you need to be communicating with them. Parents, this is going to be just like all advocacy is. It's upon us, the parents. If you just sit back and wait for them to run the show, then you're going to get run over, and your child isn't going to get an education. You have to take the lead now, and you have to say, you have to communicate with them. You have to say, I'm expecting this. You have to write letters. You have to say, I don't agree with that. This is not an equitable distance learning plan. This is what I want, and list what you're requesting. And these are the things that I teach all the parents in the monthly membership. The parent brigade that I've been offering at a very low cost so that you can understand how to do these things, how to write the letters, how to make the requests, how to write emails, what to say, how to say it, I have all the law of the logs, so you can take your data collection, I have the the templates, the fill in the blank letters, all of that stuff is within the membership. Because it's hard, you know, I know I'm giving you all this information, but then when you sit down to try to do it, it you're going to get stuck. So that's what the monthly membership is for, so that you can have all the details and understand and ask me questions and I can actually look at it with you and help you to write these things. So you want the grades, you want the assessments and you want communication with your IEP team. And then your parent rights again are that they need to be communicating with you parents on what are your concerns about next school year? Do you want to open, do you not want to open? We as parents need to have a seat at the table in the decision-making progress on how schools are going to open neck in the fall. Okay, they can't just make it arbitrarily deciding on their own and and blocking parents' voices out of what parents want to see happen next school year. All the other districts send surveys out and they let the parents know what the results of the survey was. CNUSD did not let parents know what the results of the survey was. And they're flip-flopping now with what they're deciding to do. So so that they're violating parent rights and they're not taking into consideration what parents want. They're taking into consideration what is best for them and and what the superintendent wants to do in in you know, direct you know, conflict with what the teachers are wanting, which is to be trained on how to do remote learning and be prepared, because like we said, it's it's going to be in our future, even if we open fully, it's going to be somewhere in our future, remote learning is here. And and we and we need to be prepared either way, if we open or if we don't open. And then again, I also mentioned this, that parents, if if both parents work and you're going to be out of the home working and you're not working at home, you're that's going to, you know, make a big impact on your home income, you might, some parents have told me, I have to quit my job because I have to stay on with my kid if they don't go back to school. I my 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 company won't let me work from home, so I'm going to have to quit my job or I'm going to have to take leave, my job's going to be on the line. Or there there, you know, you might lose a paycheck, you you know, there's many things to consider about childcare, you might have to hire someone to come in. That's an additional fee that you didn't have before, based on the fact that school is closed. So because of all those things, you have the right to ask for that your district access the federal state stimulus for parents to cover home childcare costs or lost pay while your child is learning from home. And you have that right to ask for that stimulus from your local school district. Okay. So those are all my tips for you for this week. So who has questions about those things? Because you should be writing this letter, parents, everybody should be starting to work on writing this letter right now. Because to ensure that next school year, no matter if we open in a in a partial model, a a you know, hybrid model, or don't open at all, or go back to school, it's going to be in the future somewhere, so. Anybody have questions? Do you guys feel like you could go write this letter right now?
No, is this the letter Valerie that you're talking about? That we're doing right now in the parent brigade, is this the same letter?
Okay, this is the letter Angie, yep.
Okay.
This is the letter we're working on right now.
Okay, good, because I just received my son's progress report and a bunch of it says a bunch of nonsense about partially met and wasn't able to not specifically targeted because of distance learning sessions and I don't know. It's a bunch of yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and a prior written notice too, I also received, which I'll just, I'll I'll scan it and send to you because I'm going to need clarification because I'm confused to what they're trying to tell me in this letter. It seems like when we go back to school what is being proposed is to evaluate the kids within the first 60 days and then they have down here description of other options considered and reasons for rejecting them. And they say the option of not conducting informal evaluations to measure progress toward goals is reject rejected because it does not support our students, so I'm I'm confused, I think they are rejecting the idea of of evaluating our kids again when they come back to school.
They can't do that, you can ask for an assessment and they have to give you an assessment. They're just, they're just saying they're not going to, they're not going to initiate the assessment. Which is really a huge violation because they're they're obligated to assess when kids come back because they know darn well that every kid's going to have regressed. So it's just a way to cover their ass so that they don't have to say the kids regressed and that they owe services that they didn't give last school year. That's a dirty, underhanded way to get out of providing compensatory services. That's what they're doing.
And and parents and parents are not going to have knowledge of that and their most parents are going to say, okay.
Yep.
Except for the ones that have been doing the town halls and the brigade and where we have more knowledge.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that's what they're banking on, they're banking on that, they're banking on, oh, well, maybe there might be maybe five percent of our whole district parents that are going to be educated enough to know what we're doing, so we're going to get away with 95% of our parents not, and so that's what we're going to do, that's what they do, it's a numbers game with them.
Yeah.
Yep. So yep, that's exactly what they're doing and also what you just said about them saying that oh, we didn't work on the goals last time because of remote learning. No, that's not an excuse, IDA wasn't waived, you were mandated to work on the goals, you violated IDA. And my child did regress and you didn't implement the IEP and you probably, I'm probably, I don't know, but I can guess that they didn't provide you with your services either. And they owe you those services, so let me just tell you, parents, that another one of my moms, I told them to to actually ask you, you say, I I'm requesting my comp ed for this many speech and language and this many OT. And they actually responded to her and said, oh, no, 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 we're not going to do that yet. When we get back to school, we're going to assess your child and then if they've regressed, then we'll talk about comp ed. No, no, they they did not implement your IP. They it doesn't, a comp ed is a completely regression is a different conversation, you guys. They they regressed because they they didn't get the teaching, the teaching, they didn't get the goals and they didn't get the education, so they regressed. The services, they was written in the IP, the IP wasn't waived, they owe you those services. That's a slam dunk. And they're trying to tell parents, we're going to see if your child regressed and then we'll talk about making up services. Nope, that's not the way it works. When they, this is a legal legally binding document, the IP. And Secretary DeVos did not say, you don't have to provide services districts because we're in remote learning. She did not say that, anything, she did not say anything close to that, she said use of telehealth now services are in play and everybody should be providing services online. When it when it's applicable or feasible, like you can't do an OT session and work with the child to hold their hand and help them. You know, certain things that are physical that that a therapist would have to do with the child, exercises, APE, adaptive physical education. You can't do that. Okay, that's an impossibility. Speech is not an impossibility and a lot of OT can be done online. So they can't just waive it altogether, flat across the board and wipe it and say, no, so you you have to understand that. Okay. And it sounds to me like Angie, that that's what they're telling you.
That. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm gonna, I you know, I sent you my last action meeting notes and in those notes, they wrote something how like I agreed that the distance learning was going to look different or something like that, but that's not what I said in my meeting. I agreed at first for them to start off with just 30 minutes to build a rapport, meaning like one session, and then I sent multiple emails after that saying, when are you going to do my son's 60 minutes of speech?
Yeah, if you didn't sign an IEP decreasing or changing the service model.
Yeah, I did it. Okay.
That, so I don't care what an email says, email does not trump the IEP.
Okay, good.
Last IEP is in effect and they are obligated.
Okay.
And and it does look different because it's not at school, it's online. That doesn't mean that you said they could waive it and not do it at all.
I know. Okay.
And even even Secretary DeVos, that's what she said, she said, you know, listen, it's going to look different because it's online and we're not in school physically, of course, it's going to look different. But that they're they're using that as an out, they're saying looking different means here, here's a bunch of stuff, parents, you do it. That's not what she meant by different, looking different means telehealth, which means online therapy, that's what it means.
Yeah, and one of my son's goals as far as site words go wasn't worked on at all. Not at all.
Oh, I'm sure, lots of goals were on at all. Okay, they basically didn't do much of anything, most I mean, the parents that I'm talking to on, you know, right now, those parents, those districts didn't do anything. I know there are some districts that did, I I know some districts that did that did a good job. But of course, this is what I'm talking about, helping the parents that are having problems, the districts that didn't do a good job. So for you guys, I'm pretty sure all of the districts are doing exactly what we're talking about.
And what do you do with when they're they're writing one thing in a report card, like he like they made statements that my son
Oops, you cut out Angie.
Did so well with writing this year and he's back that, can you hear, I cut out.
Yeah, now I can.
Okay, what do you do if they're writing one thing on the report card in the comments area, for example, saying that my son did so well with writing when that's not true?
You have to ask for them to prove it. Progress on goals has to be driven by data.
Well, this was just on his his little report card, she wrote comments as far as his writing has has been so much improved, well, he struggled with writing so much, I I practically messaged her every day about that.
Well, grade cards aren't really, you know, the grade cards are really objective are subjective to teachers and they can basically say anything they want to. But when you get into the IEP and you talk about a present level for your child's writing, that's when you can demand the data collection and they have to prove where they are and that's what the real, where the rubber meets the road on what truth comes out. So you you can't really argue a grade with a teacher, you know, unless you you have a teacher parent teacher conference, you could question them on that and say, can you show me what you're talking about because that's not been, you know, my experience, in fact, that's been a big problem this year and have that conversation. But but I would, I'm much more concerned about the present levels of performance on the IEP.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you know what, and and show your examples, your home examples and and then compare it with the what the teacher has. You know, show what you're doing at home, show what you see. And then you say, okay, well, I'm looking at what you're doing, but this is what he's doing presently, then you have proof of what he's doing.
Right, and I saved it all.
Good.
So you're, I will do that actually, good idea, thank you.
Yes, yes, absolutely, that data that you took and work samples you did during the closure that 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 now is the evidence. Just as if, you know, the teachers take their data while they're in school and they have the work samples and then they bring that to the IP meeting, well, now parents are the ones that have that information that you were going to bring and you're going to show.
Yeah, exactly, it was very interesting, in the beginning of the year, his case manager said that he wrote, I can stop now, all by himself. Well, it was funny that during this whole distance learning, he could barely write anything and was having a fit over it, so I couldn't imagine that that was ever true, which when he said it anyways, I didn't believe him.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Another quick question, this is Barbara. If a child has an IEP and the parents don't agree with the IEP and the child actually has ESY, the 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 parents had an IP meeting. The child, the the district saying the child does not qualify for ESY, the parents don't sign the IEP. Can the district still deny them ESY?
Yes. Because just not signing doesn't mean they're going to get give you what you want. They have to, they
But he already had it in his prior IEP.
Right, but every year they can make that determination again. And and they have a certain criteria that they look at for, so so the the question is, is that if if the child had ESY last year and they determined the child would regress over that period of time of school of closure in summer, then why would they not regress another time? They still have the same disability, they still have the same deficits, it doesn't make sense.
There's there's no present levels, there's no assessment, they actually wrote in the IEP that they don't have any, they don't have any present levels and everything he's going to be assessed when he comes back. But he doesn't qualify for ESY. Is that normal?
No, no, especially if if the child had it before and had ESY in the past. They determined that that child would regress during a summer break. So when when a child regresses one or two or three years in a row, they're going to regress another year, they're not going to all of a sudden not have regression. So it doesn't make sense and there, yeah, it doesn't make sense at all.
What can the parent do for something like this?
So you would write a letter, you you so you you would write a letter, like I'm saying. If there's anything in there that you want to move forward in the partial agreement, you would say, I I'm agreeing to move forward with and then list out the things you want to move forward, or you can say everything in the IP except for, I disagree that my child is not going to regress because they regressed in the summer of da 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 da, all the other summers that they that they got ESY. Plus, my child was on distance learning for March, April, May and June, so so you can bet they've regressed and now you're there having summer break. So I absolutely disagree with you that you're not giving me ESY.
And should you ask for a prior written notice for that or?
Well, they have to give you one. Yes, they have to give you one, a prior written notice when you write a letter like that, within 15 days after they receive that letter.
Okay.
And that's how you start, that's your appealing, a no, that's how you appeal when they deny you something. And it's a legal way, now you have documented it, you've documented your reasons why. And and this, and you're right, by everything we're saying, you are in the correct, okay? They're in the wrong. So now they're going to have to come back in the PWN and they're they're incriminating themselves by whatever they're going to say in that PWN if they continue to deny. And this is where you're getting a paper trail, if they continue that, then you dispute resolution or you write a compliance complaint. And then the the state will go, what are you crazy?
I have a question, another question, a quick question. Are there supposed, if a child's triennial is due first and then the annual is next, can they just skip the triennial and do the annual?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, because that's what happened in this child, they they actually skipped the annual, the triennial and they did the annual.
No, that's completely against the protocols of the assessment process, the assessment process is you review assessments first on the agenda and then you develop the goals and objectives because they're going to be based off of the present levels from the assessments. Okay, so to me, that sounds like they don't know what the hell they're doing.
Yeah, that's what that's what I'm, this poor family, she's bilingual, she speaks no English, like I told you, I helped the mommies, this is a kiddo kiddo who's going from kindergarten to first grade. And I'm helping this mommy, she speaks no English, so I always help their moms because I I'm kind of it's I I it's always different and unfortunately, it's, you know, it's my district how it is. So I'm I'm trying to help this mom, but I look at the IEP and I'm like, wait a minute, the IEP was doing April 4th. The triennial is doing April 4th and the annual is now doing until April 28th. But they, she asked him for an IEP meeting, she did request an IEP meeting. But they and they didn't do but they, and they didn't do the triennial. They did an IEP, but not the annual, not, not the triennial. And they say, okay, they were close, code 19, got it. But what are we gonna do now?
Oh, now they might have said that they couldn't complete the try because the, they couldn't complete the assessments because of the school closure. So they went ahead with the annual. Is that the reason why they said they couldn't do the try?
Yeah. Now, now that's what they're saying. But of course, after I emailed them and say, "Wait a minute, why did you do this without doing this?" And now they're coming back covering their butts, basically.
Saying
But I called them on it, but I called them on it first.
I would still look to see the date of the, that the try was due and when
April 4th.
full close.
March 19 was closed. March 19.
And when, you look back to see what was the date the assessment plan was signed?
That's what we, we, you know that they, we've been asking them and they don't give it to her. Actually, what they responded and that we've been asking, they never gave her a copy of the IEP. So
You just write, again, request, you get five, within five days. So you write a request, "I want a copy of the assessment plan and I want a copy of the IEP," and they have to give it to you within five days.
Yeah, well, I, we, we sent that request back in June 9th and we still haven't received anything. So what we did now is I actually sent it to the area that does the public record requests. I actually faxed it to them yesterday. And then today, the, the principal responded saying that they, they will be more than happy to bring it to her house. The principal wants to come to her house and give it to her. And I told her, "No, because she's gonna want you to try to sign something." You tell her, I, I told, I sent, I wrote the reply for her and I sent her, send her this. Yeah, I told her, "No, why haven't you emailed it?" And I put it there. "Are you denying me? Are you, are you denying us the documents? You know, you know."
Cuz they're already passed the, it was five days.
Yes.
They violated the timeline.
Yeah.
That's why she wants to hurry up and bring it over to you. Because you asked for public records.
No, but I'm afraid because these parents don't speak English. Every time they see them, they, they, they talk to very sweet and they have
I understand.
They're always trying to make them sign stuff.
I wouldn't let them come to my house either. Not your district, that's for sure.
Yeah, they wanna go to her house.
Sick, um, um, the undercover
PIs and all that stuff.
Yeah. I would never have them come to my house.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Hopefully this information helps all the parents too. So I'm sure she's not the only one of this going through this.
No, 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 it always helps, all this information. Everybody always learns. The more we talk about it, the more parents learn. Who else has a question? We have just a few minutes, a few more minutes left. Wow. Nobody else? Let's see. I think that there's some new people on. No?
I was looking, I was looking at the email that you just sent me that you said that that case manager was in, in violation of so many things. And I'm super upset right now because under the advisement of my old advocate, I freaking signed that stupid paper. And so now I wanna know, can I revoke that signature?
What, you signed the IEP?
Well, remember she sent the, she sent the amendment, remember, that with that attachment? I believe I signed that.
Well, when I get your records, your CUM file, I will be able to look at everything and I'll know where we're at.
Okay.
And
Don't get upset. Don't get upset Angie. It's gonna get better. You got Valerie.
Anxiety.
Yeah.
It's gonna be okay. We're gonna be okay now Angie. We're gonna be okay.
But yeah, you, to answer your question, you can revoke a signature. You can.
Okay.
So we can, we can do that. Yep, yep.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I'll have to look and see exactly, you know, what was signed, what wasn't signed, where you're at. And that, and that's why, you know, we can start on your letter though. We'll start writing a draft cuz there's lots of things to put in there. But I don't want to complete it till we get your CUM file. Because I'm sure there's gonna be other things we need to add in there after I see your IEP and your CUM file and all that stuff. So
Okay, thanks for the answering that question. That makes me feel a little better.
Is that Kate Russo? Kate? Is Kate, Kate on?
Hi Val.
It is Kate Russo. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
How is it going with school?
Everything's good. Ryan's done, but, um, I don't know, they, we're trying to not give him, you know, the speech. I've always had issues with him. It's always been our issue. But they started doing E S Y last week and he's been having OT sessions online since he even stopped going to school. But with speech, I had some issues there and I emailed the director. I didn't get a response. The thing that always gets me sometimes too is when I get emails from the case carrier that says, "Is Ryan participating in E S Y?" And I'm like, "Kate, don't you know"
I can hear you very good.
Hold on Val. How about now?
That's a little better, I think. So you, you didn't get speech, but you got OT? That's what I heard.
Let me get out of this thing. I don't know what I'm doing.
I think you have your, I think you have your hand and, and near the speaker.
Yeah, it sounds like you're all muffled.
Yeah. There you go. Maybe you were holding it with the speaker, you know, when you put your hand on the phone, sometimes you cover the speaker without knowing.
I had my, I had the, usually when I listen, I have the headphones on and I try to stay muted because there's all kinds of noise going on. Anyways, yeah, I did start getting, I started, Ryan started E S Y this week, or was it last week? And the OT has been actually meeting with him, even when the school closures were happening, but speech wasn't.
Yeah.
And I got a message before the end of the school year from the case carrier who asked if he was participating. I'm like, "Yes, he's participating." So I had asked, "Well, what's that gonna look like?" Because you know what they were doing Val? They were emailing me the lessons. And I wanna say by the second week, so when first, when school first closed, I think we closed for a month and then they started sending lessons or like the enrichment, you know, the enrichment links and all that other stuff that, that you guys have been talking about. Then they started, they moved into the distance learning. But Ryan didn't get any of his services, except for OT, which, I mean, he, he made the effort. I mean, he can't see his handwriting, but one of the goals is for him to read a story and come up with his own ideas. So
Well, then they owe you all those services. They owe you all those services that they missed. Just know.
Right, exactly. So with speech, same thing. I mean, I was just, by the second week, you know, I was doing it, speech with Ryan and I had, she, she emailed and was like, "You don't have to send the lessons back. Just, you know, what, your feedback is helpful." I'm thinking, "How are they, how is she, you know?"
They didn't. They didn't. They didn't do anything. They didn't work on goals. They didn't do progress monitoring. They didn't do anything.
So now I'm just, I don't know, but that was
The most, the, the biggest thing is that you need to write a letter saying you're expecting those services to be made up and you should write exactly how many services were missed.
Right.
Cuz if you don't make that request, Kate, they're not gonna offer it to you. They're not gonna just give it to you. You have to ask for it.
You know it.
You have to ask for it in writing. Yep, and, and you need to make sure that that doesn't happen again next school year because they're gonna just keep doing the same old thing. So what I talked about tonight, you need to write a letter and write, make all those requests of everything I said and what you expect to get that next school year, you, those things you expect in the distance learning. Otherwise, it's gonna look just like it was before cuz this is what's happening to all parents, especially in our area. All of our area there, every, all the districts are doing the same thing. Nothing. That's what they're doing.
Nothing.
They're giving parents those lists and that's what they're doing. Yep, the whole inland empire.
That's crazy.
Yep, Chino is the only one that, that's not doing it. Chino's actually doing a really good job.
You know, um, it was, it was a couple of videos ago I watched. I heard somebody, one of your other parents who logged into, to this meeting. They were from Romaland. And I had heard prior to that parent bringing that up, I don't know, cuz you were like, "Hey, I know all those guys." They weren't even, they weren't receiving nothing. No services, no work, no IEPs. They weren't conduct, they weren't even conducting any of their IEPs. They just shut it down. Like, "We're not doing none of that." So
Well, because CNUSD did too and lots of other districts sent out a P W N saying, "We're not, we're waiving IEPs. We're not getting any."
I think I got a P W N that says, "We're not providing services till the, till the end of April." That's what my PW, my P W N letter said.
That's a complete file. You could, you take that P W N and file a compliance complaint with that P W N and they would be found in violation. They can't do that. They can't just say, "We're not giving services."
Yeah, that's exactly what mine says. Sorry, we're not gonna give you any services until the end of, um, till the, yeah, the end of April. And then even until then, they still didn't.
That's insane. That's absolutely
San Diego's the same thing. I'm gonna send you San Diego's. San Diego says the same thing.
Well, it looks like compliance complaint time, you guys, because I'm telling you, if parents don't file compliance complaints, they're gonna get away with it. That's the only way they'll get held accountable. If some, if somebody doesn't hold them accountable, they're gonna get away with it. And they're gonna continue to do it.
That's, that's where I'm at Val. I don't even think, like, at this point from the, that past couple of months, you know, I, I had seen all the videos and everything cuz I think the last email I had got from you was like April 30th. I'll have to tell you something about that, but, um, I started watching all the videos and, um, I, when I saw that, this, that they weren't, I don't know, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Now I'm probably at the P W N, but yeah, that's just insane. Yeah. So I, so I'm filing a group compliance complaint with a bunch of parents in CNUSD and we're gonna file as a big group because they did the same thing to a bunch of parents all, all over the district. So I, I think that's what every parent should be doing. And that's one of the other things I'm doing in, in my brigade is I'm teaching parents how to write a compliance complaint because these are all the same violations. Though sometimes compliance complaints can be super hard. Like, sometimes when I write one, it takes me like, like 50 hours to write it because it's so hard. It's like a big legal and you have to be so factual and you have to look up every law. But this is gonna be the same violations across the board with every, every law. So it's not gonna be a hard thing. So I can teach parents, this is, these are the laws they violated. This is how you write it. Here's the form letter and write it. And the more parents that write complaints and the, and the state gets, you know, bombarded with billions of complaints from all the districts that aren't doing remote learning, maybe the state's gonna make, you know, hold accountable California districts to do it properly. Cuz they're not gonna stop if they don't have to.
That's what I was gonna, that, you just reminded me. That's what I was gonna tell you is that's, I'm at the point where I just feel like I have to file a compliance complaint. Like, in Ryan's IEP when we met, do you remember how you suggested the remedial program for Ryan?
Yes.
So when we met at his IEP, do you know the speech and the special ed teacher were responsible for that goal? So when we met, they never accessed the program Val. Never. Never accessed the program. I'm like, "How can you, how are you marking this goal partially met? When you guys have never accessed the program from? How do you even know where he's at?" None of them. And when I asked them, "Why is this goal partial, marked partially met? Who marked this partially met?" And it was quiet. And I, "How often, you know, have you guys accessed this program?" They've never even looked at it. They never even printed a report. Nothing.
So they were covering their ass. And so that's, that's a compliance complaint right there.
I know.
They didn't implement the IEP at all, the binding document.
It's crazy to me. Yep, they didn't. And then, and of course, just like with all the other parents who complained, it was, it was, that was like a seven minute, and I did record the IEP. It was like a seven minute discussion. And I asked them to review the notes and they do that same stupid thing where they try to distract you from, you know, from remembering what you're going to do. And they wanna try to excuse people. They, you know, all the same stuff. And
Yep.
None of that was in his notes. So I had to email and send my own letter and say, you know, we, this is, this was like a seven minute discussion and you didn't include it in the notes. Please add it. It's so frustrating.
Good for you. It's, it's called falsified notes because that's what it is. They're, they're intentionally falsifying notes because you have the recording to prove it. I've written compliance complaints like that and said, and said, "Falsified notes." And here's the recording. And they get found, fined in violation. And if parents start doing these things, then, then maybe districts will learn and stop doing that to parents.
Yeah.
Oh my God. I just learned something right now and I have four transcripts. I actually transcribed my meetings because you know why Valerie? And I have a bunch of that. And I didn't know that I can file a complaint on that. I actually have, they have said that they're gonna do this. Of course, I never had time to write the team action notes cuz the time is over. And then when you actually see what they write does not match what you actually had in the meeting. And I have a bunch of that.
Oh yeah, it happens all the time.
And I think they do it on purpose. "Oh, we don't have time. We sent it to you." And what, when I, when I get it, I say, "Wait a minute, this does not match." And I actually had listened to it and then look at the transcription and I highlight it's like, "Wait a minute."
Yeah, like, they could absolutely do it on purpose because then they're not held accountable to implement what the discussion was.
Or the parent concerns too.
Yeah. And so parent concerns, you guys, this is another thing I teach you in the brigade. So I teach you how to write your parent concern statement. When I have a client, I write the statement for them. So, but parents, you can learn how to write it. I can teach it to you in the brigade. You write your parent concern statement, which is a paragraph, which goes in, on the second page of the IEP that says, "Parent Concerns and Priority Statement for the Next School Year." And you can just go, "Here's my statement," and then they have to, they have to write it word per word in that section. Cuz if you just tell them in the meeting and go, "Well, I'm concerned about this. I'm concerned about that. This is my priority." Then guess what they do? They type what the hell they wanna type and they take all your words and mix it all up and make it be what they want it to be. But if you hand them a statement that you already wrote and say, "Here, this is what I want. Put it in my freaking IEP, word per word," then they have to do it. Yep. So that's how you get around that. And then the other way is that to make sure that every one of your requests is actually documented, you write your parent agenda, which I also do for every one of my clients. So what you, you write every single thing you, what you want that you're requesting in your parent agenda or what you're concerned about. And then you provide that parent agenda to your program specialist or your case carrier prior to the meeting and it becomes a legal document. So if they do that trick of falsified notes on you and they say, "Oh, well, we never talked about that or you never said that. Look at my parent agenda that I sent to you three days before the meeting and we had at the IEP meeting." Yes, I did. And I also have my courting. So, and then you have them. And then you follow up with a letter like we're talking about. And this is how you do it, parents. That's how you do it. And then you file a compliance complaint if they still don't do it. So good, you guys are learning. I'm so glad. I'm so glad. Because I'm telling you guys, this is my biggest fear and why I developed the membership program, so I could reach as many parents as possible. I'm afraid they're going to start dismantling IDEA because you guys, look at what's happening in our nation. Look what's happening. Our rights are getting taken away. So, and they're already killing off old people. So who's next? Kids with disabilities, people with disabilities. Okay, so our right, the, the secretary, Betsy DeVos, almost waived IDEA as, as it was, guys. I don't know if you know this, but it was big news. So the, the reason the districts didn't do anything, a lot of them did nothing because they were banking on Secretary DeVos waiving IDEA. Because it was like, that, that they were going, "How do you expect us to do, implement IEPs and services and all of this when you, when we shut down in one day overnight? How do you expect us to do that, Secretary DeVos? You need to waive IDEA so we're not held accountable. So we didn't violate, you know, billions of IEPs across the nation and so we're not gonna have to owe all of these compensatory services. You, you have to waive it." And everybody thought she was going to. But then it came out and she didn't waive it. So now the districts are responsible to make up all of those services they didn't do, all the teaching they didn't do. They have to do it. It's the law. Okay, but they're trying to get out of it. They're trying to weasel out of it. They're trying to do all these tricks that we're talking about right now to get out of it. That's why I'm saying, "Don't let them out of it. They can't get out of it. They, she didn't waive it. They gotta do it." So, but, but let's just say, what's to say she isn't gonna waive it down the line? When things can, if things continue to escalate the way they are, rights are getting diminished, taken away. And she could easily say, "Oh, well, I'm gonna cut out this or I'm gonna cut out that" and start dismantling piece by piece. And IDEA is a very strong law, you guys. It's a very strong federal law that protects our rights and our child's rights. And it's, it's very, I mean, anything And it's, it's very, I mean, anything our child needs is in IDEA. We can get the most amazing education for our child, and you guys have all the power. You just don't know how to use it, and you don't know how to implement, and you don't know how to enforce it. Which is what I teach you, and why I developed the brigade. So the more parents that learn these things and stand up to them and don't allow them to diminish your power and, and, um, you know, say, no, we are not gonna let you do that. The more we're promoting keeping our parent rights that, that we have fought for over 45 years since Ford put it into law in the early 70s. We've been fighting. It wasn't very good when it first came out, let me tell you. Our kids were still discriminated against big time. And we've come so far, you know? But it's gonna, it's at risk, it's at risk. So food for thought, everybody. Okay, guys, any, any closing comments or questions from anybody? Okay. Yes? Yes, yes, yes. Go ahead. You muted yourself again. I, we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Yeah, the rest of these kids, uh, began, uh, yeah, because, um, in school, when, uh, you don't give them the, the proper access to services, their rights are not fully heard, and, uh, that's where, um, the, the, uh, the unequal, uh, the inequality begins in the school system. And with that, radiates into higher levels and college, and that's where we have all this protesting going throughout the country.
Yes.
Um, so I, you know, you are correct that the IDEA is a very, uh, strong law. But it's, um, for many, many years, it has not been, um, uh, parents, uh, not that they don't know, but the way it's, it's, the school districts don't want the parents to know to help get the services they need, because they know these kids need services, but they're doing it away. So I want to ask you, because advocacy, advocacy is a, um, an area that I've been very interested in in terms of trying to know more so that I can better help my, my child. Um, I believe you mentioned that you were trained at the, uh, College of William &amp; Mary, uh, in special education law. And I think that's the only thing that's available out there as of right now. Um, do you have any other recommendations so that we can become more, better trained? The other area I, I look into is the brain clinic, which is through the San Juan Valley College of Law. But I don't think there's anything else that's out there for us.
They, there's, there is no credential or degree. Um, well, there's a credential, but believe me, when I went to William &amp; Mary, I didn't learn that much. I, I, I already knew everything, because I already been advocating for years and years and years. I just wanted to get the credential so I could say, oh, I have a credential. But I had been advocating for years and years before that. So unfortunately, they, they, I don't know why, maybe because they don't want advocates. But there's no degree that you can get in advocacy. You could, all you can do is go to law school and become a lawyer. So it's, it's really sad because they should have a formal education for advocates that don't want to focus on suing, you know, litigation and going to fair hearing. Because believe me, you guys, I get 95%, even more, 90, I'd say 98% of my hundreds of families I've helped over the past 23 years, I've gotten everything they need without going to litigation, without filing for hearing. So you can get what you need when you know your parent rights through the IEP process. And, and that, well, that's the situation. But I, I don't know if you heard me, um, but I, I have a program that I teach parents, and I also have a program, an advanced program to teach advocates who want to become professional advocates. I developed one because I said, they don't have one, so I'm gonna make one. And I, I've been writing that, that curriculum over the past three years, and I have it. So I'm launching that in July. So if you're, if you're interested in that, it's going to be launched in July. We're gonna start the course probably the end of July.
Are you interested in launching this through, um, UCLA School of Law? Because I talked to some, like, attorneys, and they said that, um, they want, you know, uh, more interest in special education law, but because many, one, they are not aware that it exists in law school. Uh, this is a field that exists, but not many people are aware. And two, um, most of the, uh, lawyers prefer to work for school districts rather than advocate for the parents.
That's right. I know. I know, it's true. It's very true. And, and there's not that many special ed attorneys either. And you're right, the ones that there are, they work for the school district on the other side. And there's very few that work for the parents.
Sad.
Good ones. There's a few good ones. Yeah, you can
Very few.
Yeah, you can get attorneys that will take parents' money and rip parents off, and, which is horrible, and, and, and just just so unethical when a, a parent is fighting for their child's rights, and then you get an unethical attorney taking money from a parent and not getting them anything. I, I get, when I hear these stories, it makes me sick because I get way more than most of these attorneys get without going to hearing and charging the parent a quarter of what attorneys charge. That's bad, it's a, not a good situation. But yeah, that's why I started my program, because I'm like, I'll, I'll train advocates, I'll train them. So we can have as many advocates as we can and as many educated parents as we can to protect our rights.
I have a question. Since I came from like a rural area, um, I know you, you, I look at your, what you have to offer, the
Well, it's virtual, it's not
Yeah. Uh, what I meant to say is, uh, um, because I'm from the Central Valley, do you offer in terms of a group rates for a certain number of parents to, to be trained by you since we don't have much in Central Valley?
Mm-hmm. Um, what, what do you mean, you don't have much? What does that mean?
I meant to say, like, in terms of, if you offer, like, instead of the individual rate, you offer like a group rate. So let's say you train like 10 parents or 15 parents with Central Valley, but you offer as a group rate as opposed to the individual rate that you, you currently offer. I think, um, if I remember correctly, I think you offer a rate of like 2,000 or so approximately.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So yeah, yeah, I would be absolutely, um, consider that, giving you guys a group rate. Absolutely, I would. Yes. Yes, we can talk about that for sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to you later.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. Okay, guys, so, um, I hope you wrote down everything I, I told you tonight, you, uh, those of you that aren't in the brigade, and start working on your letter. And, you know, you can always ask me questions on my, um, network page, okay? The, the Parent Empowerment Network is where you can communicate with me and ask me questions. Say, hey, Valerie, I'm stuck on this, can you help me out? And, and ask me questions on that page. And of course, you parents that are in the brigade, you can always contact me through the Brigade Facebook page. Okay, guys?
Thanks, Val.
Thank you, Val. Well, I'll see you guys soon. Good night.
Good night. Bye.